Okay, we'll call the meeting to order at 7:02. It's November 10th. First we'll do is review and prove the minutes from October 6th.
So moved?
Phil, what's second it? You got a question?
Yeah, I looked at the minute. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, so I looked at the minutes just real quick, just to make sure like I was prepared for this. And instead our advisor was Mr. Blinder and it's just Ms. Yomack and I just want to make sure that was correct.
Did you hear that Judy?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good catch, Maddie.
I'm sorry, can you just correct me, it's Ms. Yomack or Mr. Blinder, which one is it?
It's Ms. Yomack is our advisor of the student council.
So we have a first and a second, and then I'll let Judy, when she's ready, do a roll call.
Bob Halla?
Yes.
Lynn Roberts?
Yes.
Paul Kanter?
Yes.
Judy Pierce, yes. Mary Raymond?
Yes.
Damian Fosnot?
Yes.
Keith McCarland?
Yes.
Melissa Novak?
Yes.
And did Olivia join us? Is she on yet? Yep, Olivia. I see her as muted, but.
She must be new at it.
Are you looking for me?
I am. Do you want to approve the minutes?
Ah, yes, I don't have a right now, so I have to be off camera, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
We all set?
Yeah.
Okay. Shelley, financial statement, please.
So I emailed out the monthly financial report as well as the expenditure report through December 31st. I'm not December. What am I thinking? October 31st. My kid can't start talking about Christmas. So we had 19 warrants that you all reviewed totaling $12,207,455.30. Thank you for doing that. I don't have any.
Did you say 12 million?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll double check the number because it's a big number, but I'm pretty sure that's what Donna gave to me.
Okay.
Um. That's all funds though, it's not just general funds, so it includes any other funding source that the school has. So I'll double check that she didn't have a typo in what she sent over to me. Um, so I don't have any concerns about general fund. We continue to monitor where there might be savings or overages on expense accounts. If you took a look at the report, you know, things are certainly much more cleaned up with payroll than they were last month. Last month, Mr. Halla had asked some really great questions about some overages in certain salary lines. And I've worked with payroll to clean those up and get people in the right spot. So we're still a work in progress, but I think you'll see a lot more negatives there. You know, I'm also looking at accounts that we normally would have used for summer expenditures that maybe the summer programs either didn't happen at all or they were much smaller. So I'm sort of at this point, now that we're a few months into the fiscal year, starting to take a closer look at where we may have some savings that we can capture for unforeseen expenditures. But there's really nothing to report on for general funds concerns unless you have any questions.
I just got to help you out, there's no way that the warrant's rounded to 12 million. So it's probably.
Yeah, that's what.
1.2 million.
It might be 1.2. I'll, I'll double check it. Um. So school lunch update, this is something that we have been talking about for months now. We have had it as a point of concern, a highlight of concern for us because we didn't know what we would be serving for school lunches. And school lunches are also free for all children now. So, you know, we're doing okay. I, I think the number of lunches that have been served in school is increasing. October's been a full month, so it gives us a good snapshot of the revenue projections for the rest of the year. We've served around 1,500 lunches, 250 breakfasts, plus we've had about 1,100 additional pickups on top of that from community members. Also, our revenue year to date, and the revenue is primarily based on government reimbursement. It is not based on our typical school lunch revenue. There are some à la carte items being sold, but certainly nowhere near what we're used to seeing. So I did give you a year to date, we're looking at revenue of just under 35,000. However, our expenses year to date, including payroll, have been 44,000. So our net income year to date is already about $9,500 in the hole. We had some funds in that account going into this year. So the current balance in the revolving fund after the year to date transactions is just over $1,100. So obviously, we will not be able to continue to pay wages out of there. This is something that we did talk about month to month. And I'd like to make the recommendation that we move the cafeteria wages off of the school lunch revolving account onto the general fund moving forward. With the projections that I have in for revenue and expenses, we will be able to cover food and supply costs, but we will not be able to continue to cover the wages. So we have some savings in the general fund. Whether it was, you know, a change of staffing here or there, and we had someone come in at a lower step than the prior year or if the position that wasn't filled. So we are able to absorb that into the general fund and not use any other funds. And I'd like your support to go ahead and make that change retroactive to the beginning of the year and moving forward.
Bill?
About that Shelley, I mean, the rationale behind putting the wages of the school, of the cafeteria in the cafeteria account was to get a more accurate picture of the profit, loss, revenue, whatever, whatever you want to call it, of the financial picture of the cafeteria. And when, when, when you, when you cut, you know, when you take part of that picture and put it somewhere else, then the picture becomes harder to find or to sort together. So like, I mean, rather than putting the employees into the general fund, can't we put the general fund into the cafeteria account?
No, I mean, you can't supplement a revolving fund with your general fund expenditures that I'm aware of. I will look into it, but I'm not aware of any instance where you can take Chapter 70 or local funding from our towns and move it into a revolving account. But I can certainly check with the auditor. I can tell you that the coding system is really clear for the general budget. And I will be able to easily identify. If you were to look at the expense report, the code for cafeteria wages is 3,400, which I believe is on page seven of our report. So right now you can see that just the portion of Mary's salary, the food service director that we pay is going into the general fund, so not the regular cafeteria staff. And we would have a separate line item in there that would track that. So I can manually create a true picture of what the revenue and expenses are so that we can see what the net income is still based on the program. But it, we can't run the school lunch account into the negative. We'll have to supplement it at some point. We could let it go for now and wait until later in the year to see how much we have to move over. Or we could make the shift at this point and put the wages onto the general fund. But either way, I think we are going to have to pay for them from another funding source.
See, I mean, I, I think one of the things is that I, I felt this for a long time, that it's wrong to expect the cafeteria to pay for itself in any school. And that when the food service program that was established by the federal government in the 70s, if they kept up just with inflation, the schools would be getting $9 in reimbursement per meal. And that, that's the whole Alpha and Omega of the whole story. But like I, we, I, I think that it's okay to put money into the, to treat it like it's going to be a loss leader. And that's just the way that works. It's, you can't, it's so, it's so hard to serve palatable food with, and have to keep a positive balance in your account as a cafeteria director. It's just, they don't give you enough money, period.
And I don't disagree with you. I think the challenge that we face, and this is not just unique to Frontier, it's at all of the schools. Outside of the food service director, the wages for staff have been paid from revolving funds. So at Frontier for the year, that's a total of $75,000. So if school lunch can't support that staff, then we have to have another funding source. And $75,000 into our general fund budget on a normal year when we don't have savings and there hasn't been all of this crazy fluctuation, that's a big percentage to add in, which is a reality that we're going to have to face looking at next year of how we fund those positions. Because the work is not going away. You know, the same staff are needed, the same hours are there. Some of them are actually working overtime because, not overtime as overtime law, but they're working harder because they're bringing meals to the gym and things like that. So, you know, I, I agree with you. But it's, it's going to be difficult if we can't fund those positions from its own revenue.
I feel like, I think you're, you're right, because if Mr. Decker was here, we'd be hearing an earful from Mr. Decker. So I personally think we should, I think we should wait a little bit like Phil says. And unless somebody else wants to chime in on this.
I mean, part of it too is that we've already been, you know, because the benefit stream that, that the employees in the cafeteria get are already compensated through the general fund. There's already part of the picture that we're not getting. And we're already artificially, not artificially, but you know, the, the books in, it doesn't, we're not, we're not reflecting our true and accurate costs in, in that line item already. And it's, it gets harder, that, I mean, that's what, that's all that, you know, sorry.
Yeah, no, you're right, Phil. We're not capturing all of our costs in here. There's certainly insurances and things like that that are liabilities for the school that we do pay from general fund, which is the case in any revolving program that has revenue coming in. We never fully capture it in, in the funds. But revolving is the same way in our early childhood programs. It's the same there in the elementary schools. We can certainly hold off, you know, Frontier's pot of money goes into one bank account. So it's not like the account is truly negative. You know, we have funds to continue to support the expenses and the wages. But the account as a whole, by the end of the year, we will have to rectify and make sure that we do put it at least in the positive. We don't have to carry a surplus by any means, but you know, we can't carry it negative year to year. We will be required, whether that's with E and D or general fund money or school choice money, whatever it is, we will have to make sure that we do rectify and balance out the account. So I'm happy to do whatever you all would like to do.
Can I, can we, you know, once we get going on this a little bit, can we, I think we did it weightily for quite a few years because it was always in a negative, can we take money out of, out of school choice to take care of what we're talking about? Versus unless, unless we did have a lot of programs not, you know, happening, you know, during the summer months and there's a lot of money there that could offset it.
Yeah, we can take it out of school choice. It doesn't matter what other funding source it comes from. In the end, it just has to get put to a positive balance. And if we have general fund savings available, there isn't a reason to not use those funds, you know, unless we want to continue to build up E and D and spend down school choice. But six in one half dozen in another, you know, it's still sort of this revolving money for the school. But we will have to make a decision. Keith, did you have your hand up? I thought I saw you have a comment or question for me.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if this is a temporary recommendation or is this one that you would recommend going forward? Like?
That's a really great question. So I, I don't have an answer for that at this point. I think it's partially dependent upon what the government decides for lunches for next school year. If this USDA program continues and free lunches are for everyone, we're not making the same amount of money as we were if students were paying for lunch on their own. The other thing that we have to do right now that's bringing down significantly our revenue is change what we're serving. So the amount of à la carte items that we normally have for students to buy are not available. It's very minimal choices. So, and that's because of where lunch is located. You know, lunch is not just in the cafeteria, it's also in the gym, which you have to have portability with things. And kids are also eating outside. So if we can bring back our program to some normalcy, I do think revenues can increase again. Our food service director has done a great job from my understanding, although this is my only second year working with her. She's done a really great job of balancing out all of our programs and getting us back on good terms as far as product that we're serving and then being able to support our wages. So I think some things will have to change back to what they were last year in order for us to be able to make some money. We are going to have to consider whether or not we can pay for wages next year out of this fund. Because as of right now, there's no surplus. I mean, like I said, year to date balance is $1,145.57 in the negative. So we have no savings right now in the school lunch revolving fund. So we're starting out FY '22 not in the best position in this account. But again, we still need the staffing there to serve lunches to families, so.
Can we?
Not a great position to be in.
Can we go through another month and just see what happens with November and see how, how worse it got? Or did it get a little bit better with? You know, I would, you know, does anybody else want to chime in on that?
Sounds like a good idea.
Shelley. Well, we can start to project out based on where we are. You know, we've had about a month of normalcy of what the meals going out are. I mean, you have to remember folks, that the, the government's paying for lunches, but they're not paying for the full amount. So we can start to decide what's the, what's the subtraction rate of how far we'll be in debt by the end of the year. And it's the same problem all schools are having because their, their reimbursement program is not paying for the actual cost of doing the meal. So everybody gets a free meal, said to the government, and, but we're not, they're not actually paying for it all. So, so we'll be able to project that out. And that's, I think that's what Shelley's trying to prepare for, knowing that it's going to come out less, but.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I've definitely looked at those projections. I can put it more concretely together for you to look at. October is a month where we have the highest number of food service days because there's only one holiday. I think it's 21 or 22 service days in October. And I think our revenue for October alone was just shy of 7,000, I mean, not seven, $9,000. Sorry, I'm tired, it's late. Clearly, I'm making mistakes here. 9,000 on revenue and our expenses for October alone were 15,000. So we're not making money here. We're covering our, our food and we're not even fully covering our food costs month to month. But I'm happy, you know, like I said, we can leave it the way it is for now. Happy to do that, we'll keep it as it is. I will put together a paper projection for you all to look at based on the September, October, November. We won't wait, yeah, we'll have November done because I don't think we meet until like the 12th or something. And then you can see what the actual projections are on paper and we'll take a look from there.
Thank you.
Sound good?
Thank you.
Um, so I have a couple of other things to report on. I wanted to give you a COVID expense update. So all four of our towns, Conway, Deerfield, Sunderland and Wheatley have supported our request for Municipal Cares Act funding for Frontier Regional. So our expenditures that we submitted requests for are $176,000 for items related to PPE, cleaning, school distance learning and social distancing. So whatever each town's portion is, I'm working on gathering the bills with my staff and we'll submit those to the town for reimbursement. We have to pay for them all first and then they'll cut checks back to us. So we're thankful for that support because Frontier did not have access to this particular money because it was specifically municipal related. And so they had to go to their select board and ask for this money. The town administrators advocated on our behalf. So I do appreciate their support in this and the town's support as well. And then we also had, Frontier was awarded its own DESI grants for COVID-related expenditures of around 160,000. There's a small amount of money left to be spent there. We're talking with administrators on how to spend that currently. It looks like most of it will go to technology at this point. But I'll work with George and Sarah to make sure that those grants are spent down in a timely fashion. And then two of our towns have requested budget information for FY '22. Conway and Sunderland are sending out their own budget calendar and have requested that we start working on all of that. You know, Darius and I, they're just talking about, there's so many unknowns. And we don't even have a budget for FY '21. It's hard to start planning for '22, but it's certainly on our mind. And we are starting to think about all the various components that go into building that budget in such a financial uncertainty or uncertainty.
Yeah, so Shelley, just on that, so I went to the Sunderland Select Board meeting last night just to have a conversation with them. Just kind of giving them a general overview. It's very difficult for us to come up with a budget. Again, I, I know some of you guys, this is old, this is old hat, but you know, we don't know our revenues. We're like our own little town. Until we get the, the cherry sheets for, for next year, we just are getting the cherry sheets for this year right now. Until we have the cherry sheets for next year, we don't have any idea what our, what our income is to base a budget off of. And so, you know, we obviously, we're, we're starting looking at services and maybe, you know, and from both towns, I was asked for a level service budget or a level funded budget for another straight, second straight year, which is actually a reduction. And remember that we paid for that reduction out of savings we had last spring from the shutdown. So we're actually going to be looking at from a, and Shelley, help me out here if I'm, if I'm misspeaking, okay? Just because I kind of go down this road where I kind of know what I'm talking about. That we're talking about possibly up to a 5% decrease just out of the gate if we're level funded. And that's before we get insurance numbers that could go spike up and some of those other things that we, because we operate as our own kind of, our own region, our own municipality is how we kind of act. So for them to ask us to have a budget in early January, it's not really reasonable. But we can start getting, and I talked to them about that. It was just about, it's about a season about, we have to be far more transparent than ever because it's going to be tight for all of our towns. It's not a year where we can come in and, you know, five or 6%, or what are we going to need? We're going to have to work really closely with them because they're going to get hit across the board on things. And so I went there last night, basically just said, you know, we'll communicate, we'll continue to communicate through this, both at the elementary and at the secondary level. Conway was also, I had a conversation with Tom up there, and he understands the schools are a little bit different than the other. It's a general letter going to all departments. But there's going to be also more, need to be more communication because the way this budget cycle, I'm going to guess is going to happen, is going to be kind of wait, 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 then fast and furious if we're going to make our normal timeline. And so, and if it's going to be fast and furious without, with reductions, that's a lot of work on, on all the administration and on you folks. Because we try to figure out how we do that in a way to, you know, keep the best programming moving forward. So just so you know, we're, you know, it's like, on a side note, Bill's not here tonight, but we do have to get the budget subcommittee kind of getting going as well to start meeting with us. Probably a next meeting, I was going to say Shelley, probably sometime in December, which is a little bit earlier than we usually do, to start talking about what does it look like? Just shifting the numbers over what we do know. And then I saw you raise your hand, Phil, but one positive thing, the Pfizer thing that came out yesterday is really positive for us because now at least we have some idea that we may have a normal, some sort, some kind of normalcy for next year. I don't know if it can be exact, but right, you know, going into planning the budget phase and not knowing if we're going to be a hybrid, remote, that kind of stuff, maybe we'll have vaccinations, you know, I looked at Missy and maybe what's, what your thought is on that from, from what you're hearing out there in your field. But you know, you know, could most people be vaccinated by, by summer? That's the, you know, we can all be hopeful. Don't shoot us down yet, Missy, because we're all hoping that's the case.
I know everybody's hoping, but we got to, we're, they're still in, they've got a few weeks before they can even get the data out. And then we need to have like actual scientists, not public speakers on news, on news organization. We have to have them tell us what things look like. So I, I know it's exciting, but I'm just. Tamp it down a little bit. And there's some, some big logistical things with this, so. So it's got to be cold.
I guess the one thing I was saying is when we build our budget, not knowing what the model is also is extremely difficult. We start looking at staffing and that kind of thing. And obviously, the model we're in is a more expensive model than the normal, you know, so it's just very, it was, more information we get is going to help us along, so. All right, I talked too much. Sorry.
Phil, you want to say something, Phil?
Yeah, I mean, just a couple of things that, I mean, I, just because the town administrator asked for something, it doesn't really mean that that's what the town wants. It's just what the town administrator wants. So, you know, they, they always want a level funded budget because there's so many other competing claims in every other town department every year. But, you know, if, there is, I mean, I, I, and, and part of it, you know, the, the towns have a budget process, you know? We voted on the budget process, the X day of X month is when X something happens. And this, and, and so they treat that this year just like every other year for, for that purpose. And, you know, there's, this is certainly the year, I would think, to throw all that stuff out the window and just survive as best we can with the limited amount of information that we get on a daily basis, et cetera, et cetera. And all that being said, from what I understand of the state projections of, of what the numbers were for last year's budget that they finally gave us, those were sort of better than what we had hoped for. And for, I, I know from all of our four towns, municipal tax revenues are better than what we had hoped for. That, that, the, you know, the, the worst, I think most, most of us are sort of pretty comfortable saying that the worst case scenarios for this year and for next year, finance wise, for the town and for, for the towns are not going to be coming true, that it's going to be better than that. So, you know, hopefully, we're not, yeah, yeah, but I mean, hopefully, we're not like seriously considering entertaining a level budget this year again, that that's, the hardship and the craziness that that would entail is just not something I'd like to really, you know, and the other part of it too is that, you know, I'd like to avoid the thing that we did last year, which was, you know, the, the school administration doing the five towns budgets, school budgets over and over and over again. And I mean, or that, the, just the more, for new information and, you know, da, 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 everything just kept changing. And it'd be nice to kind of avoid that and just to do them once. So.
So I have, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
What I'm trying to say is just follow your own schedule. And, you know, you're, the school is the 900 pound gorilla in the budget process for all the towns. And, you know, it's, just, just know that, so.
Okay, so I have one last comment, which is a little bit contradicts what Phil just said, that the towns are feeling like the numbers are coming out better. Because I did look at the cherry sheets that came out this week. House proposed their first draft, I believe, of funding. And for Chapter 70 for FY '21, they are looking at level funding, which is what the governor had put in his most recent update as well. Level funding for Frontier actually means a loss of $17,000 of Chapter 70 funding. So if that is what the state ends up voting on and moving forward with, we will have to consider how we're going to make up for that budget shortfall because we will have a loss of revenue there. And all of the towns are seeing a little bit of a loss. Frontier is seeing the most, Deerfield, and then the, you know, other three smaller towns are not seeing as much after Frontier and Deerfield. And really, that losses, all they're doing is they took away any SOA money, which we really didn't get, the Student Opportunity Act funding. What we got was the $30 per pupil based on the foundation budget. So they're just backing that out at this point. So that extra 17,000 we thought we were going to have, we don't. So we'll see what happens, but that's just one more thing to put on the radar that we may have to be having conversation about how to fund that shortfall.
Thanks, Shelley.
Sure, and Judy, I will get you the warrant number. I apologize on that typo. And Bob, I'm sure if when you signed them, you saw a $12 million warrant, you would have been in my office. So, you know, clearly I've got a number off there, so I'll email you the right number, Judy.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
But I'm not sure if I even signed it yet, so. You know, I've been in the woods too long, so you know. Um, did anybody else have any questions for Shelley before we go on? Okay, we got public comment tonight. I think we have a couple of people that want to speak. Is Jennifer Smith, I think is going to speak first. Am I correct?
Sure. Hi, hi. Thank you for having me. I just wanted to share a little bit of work, um, that's happening in the elementary schools and share some gratitude this evening. So thank you for, you, uh, my, thank you for giving me some time. My name's Jennifer Smith and I am a fourth grade teacher at Deerfield Elementary. After the events in the world and hearing from over two hundred alumni of Frontier, the district began working over the summer to develop a task force and anti racism and equity committee. In addition to this district committee, I worked with a small group of elementary teachers to develop a ten week long professional development series for our elementary staff and faculty. We work closely with the district consultant, Amanda Moseya, to have district wide workshops for the elementary teachers, pre and post reflection data, and small groups doing pathways of study for our approximately two hundred staff and faculty. The elementary schools are about to complete their first ten weeks where we've dived deep into the history of racism in this country and the development of identities and white privilege. We're doing this work in order to know how to address biases, stereotypes and well intentioned, but nevertheless problematic messages that are sent to our, all of our students. Through this work, we will be able to developmentally and appropriately confront, challenge and work to undo systematic racism that is prevalent in our schools. These topics come up at all levels and teachers need to be trained and prepared to guide their students through it. I wanted to express my great appreciation tonight to Darius and especially to Kim McCarthy, who supported our work and pushed for a large amount of time for the teachers to do this personal work required to be comfortable and skilled in this area. I know the school committee members would agree that this is important work and must be supported and required for all staff, faculty and administrators, so that our families and students of color begin to feel heard and prioritized in our community. I'm excited to continue this work in the elementary schools through the winter and I'm looking forward to hearing what the administrators are working on to become leaders in this front. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jennifer. Um, Jessica, you there?
I am. Um, I'm going to share my screen as I speak. There's, there's one sort of visual component to what I would like to say. All right. I hope you can see it. I can start reading it, even if you can't see it yet. Thank you for the opportunity to be heard tonight. I serve on the Joint Labor Management Committee of a neighboring school district where I teach. We're currently working to revise the district's metrics policy. As part of this work, I have closely followed Massachusetts Department of Public Health's COVID data, COVID daily and weekly data for more than two months. And I have studied metrics policies from several school districts in our region and examined many, many online data trackers from around the country. It is from this experience that I want to share with you a critical perspective of the state's newest metric system and how it applies to smaller municipalities like the four foundation towns of Frontier Regional. The new system was touted by state leadership as being more conservative than the CDC, but this is only true for cities with populations of at least ten thousand. It is categorically false for towns under ten thousand, which are now subject to a completely different set of rules. Under the new system, our small municipalities were not served well because it was based on average daily per capita cases and our small populations made our towns overly sensitive to single cases. There was no nuance allowed for contained clusters like a single household in town accounting for three, four or five cases. DPH tried to manage this challenge by saying that towns would not receive a color coded rating with less than five cases. This meant that five cases in Deerfield within two weeks would earn a high yellow rating and a sixth case would make Deerfield red. For the other three towns, there was no possibility for ever rating green or yellow. The fifth case would put all of us deep into red. With the revised metrics, the state eliminated that problem by setting a separate metric for all towns with populations under ten thousand. It is a raw number. Red for all of us is now twenty-six cases in two weeks regardless of population. Let me back up to compare Massachusetts metrics to the CDC. It's critical to understand that Massachusetts has always used a metric of average daily cases per hundred thousand people over fourteen days. The CDC's metrics and maps all use average total cases per hundred thousand people over fourteen days. If you're comparing Massachusetts old metrics or our new metrics for towns above ten thousand, with the CDC metrics, you need to remember to divide or multiply one of those figures by fourteen in order to make an accurate comparison. Since we've probably all been following Massachusetts data expressed in daily per capita rates, here is the comparison expressed in familiar figures. Um, if you can't see this, could somebody interrupt me and tell me? Um, so the threshold for red rating until through last week in Massachusetts was eight cases per hundred thousand people average over the last two weeks. Now for the towns that have at least ten thousand people, that has been bumped up to ten, plus they also have to qualify uh, depending on the city size with, um, their test positivity rate. The CDC's metric is the equivalent of fourteen point two cases per day. A town of ten thousand, so now we have this twenty-six case rule. If you are at the top of that range, your town has ten thousand people, it's a daily per capita of seventeen point eight. But it's the same raw number for any town under ten thousand. So under the new metric, Deerfield needs a, a per capita of thirty-six cases a day. Sunderland needs fifty, Conway is ninety-eight and Whately is a hundred and seventeen. As you can see, the twenty-six total cases rule may work okay for a town with ten thousand people. But for Union Thirty-eight towns, we would be in relatively catastrophic circumstances before we earned a red rating in the eyes of Boston. I have already written to Joe Comerford and Natalie Blay about the unsuitability of this new metric to ask what could be done. I urge all FRSU Thirty-eight School Committee members and district leaders to join me in rejecting the new metrics from the state because they do not promote safety in our towns. As I was told by an epidemiologist yesterday, Dr. Megan Harvey of Springfield College, they're not supported by science. There are other more nuanced ways to examine local and regional data and determine the need for pivoting between educational models. Meg Birch is doing a fantastic job of examining and promoting these approaches, not to mention collaborating, collaborating with all of our boards of health to include a wide range of local expertise in the revision of our district metrics policy and also in future conversations, if and when the time to pivot between models comes. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak and thank you for your service to our district.
Thanks, Jess. Uh, Meg, do you want to chime in on anything that Jess presented to us?
He babbles on our agenda tonight.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Uh, we have no other public comment unless somebody in our group wants to say something. Uh, how about student council report?
Yay. So most of y'all probably know who I am, but for those who don't, I'm Maddie Leoni and I'm the Vice President of Student Council this year. And recently we just put out a survey, I believe this Friday or Thursday night. Um, to all of our students that we have at Frontier, sort of asking what they think about Schoology, what they think about our hybrid versus remote, what they think about Google Classroom. How are the issues working out? Are they motivated? Are they not motivated? And so far we've, we've received a hundred and twenty-four responses, which is not as many as we'd like, but we'll take it for right now, since it's been a few days. And I just want to share sort of the most important bullet points, I guess, that we had that they asked me to talk to you guys about. So the first one is typically most students are motivated to, to come to school. Over sixty percent said that on a scale of one to ten, six to ten, that they would, that they're really motivated to come to school. But in this sort of hybrid, remote uncertain time, we now have that same percentage rating it from a five to a one, which is disheartening, but you know, we're hoping it's going to pick up and we're going to send this, uh, a similar survey out sort of towards the end of the year to see if maybe motivations increased because that's kind of what we hope. It looks like a lot of people, um, are really, really happy with the COVID nineteen uh, safety precautions that have been put in place. There's been a few people who are not, um, but over half of the people rated the COVID nineteen precautions very, very highly. Um, and sort of again, looking at Schoology versus Google Classroom, a lot of kids again are struggling with losing assignments in Schoology. Um, there is a function on Schoology where you cannot submit multiple documents to a question, which is making it hard when teachers assign something that is many parts. And they then have to assign, make separate assignments and it's hard to keep track of. Uh, that's sort of the feedback that we're getting. And we also found that seventy percent so far have said that it's easier to organize our school workload on Google Classroom. And then we asked, uh, kids to reflect on that. Uh, because, you know, we like to have that. And it's saying that Schoology causes wifi, mic and camera problems. And also that the calendar isn't as prevalent on Schoology as it is on Google Classroom. Google Classroom, it's in your face and you see it right there. And it is on Schoology, but you would then have to scroll to find all of your assignments, which can be tricky for some students. Let me see. A lot of people seem to be having uh, more than three times a week troubles with Schoology. And we hope that that's going to change sort of going into the next semester and the next quarter. And everybody, eighty-six percent of people are happy with whether they chose hybrid or remote. And then we sort of had an open ended question at the end where we let students respond as they saw fit. They could comment on anything that we asked them to. And sort of the common theme is that students are finding it really, really, really hard to focus in class and to stay on top of assignments because they're on the screen for six hours for school and then homework is also assigned online. So that can be another three to five hours with a total of sort of nine to thirteen hours online, which is crazy, especially for somebody with a developing brain. So just that's been sort of the biggest concern that we have. And we are looking to, I've been talking with our president, Isabel, and we are finalizing our plans for Spirit Week so that way we can um, have a meeting with Mr. Linus and Mr. Dredge um, with a concrete plan and not just, um, willy nilly ideas. So look for that in the next report. We should, we're trying to get that up and running, hopefully in December before we head off to break and before sort of the new semester begins. That's one of the things that we've been really trying to focus on as well. And we did have Toga Day that we had Monday and Tuesday, huge success. Everybody loved it. Everybody was wearing togas. And we were on the football field. We had a grand old time and it was just really nice to sort of see that sense of community and spirit in a time where it's been really hard to see that. And to get the pictures from the online students who weren't able to make it, but still want to participate of them in their houses, sort of in their togas. And it was just really awesome to see that. Any questions? And also, once we get sort of two weeks with this survey um, and in the next report, um, we will report back the full findings of our survey.
Can you, um, also, uh, maybe do it on a document and we can get it emailed ahead of time to us as school committee members?
Absolutely. Yeah, there's a, I can pull up all those charts for you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Phil?
Yeah, first I just, I, I nominate, I nominate you for the student representative to the school committee Hall of Fame. The, you know, can, 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 uh, can, um, George or Scott or someone address this school, Schoology, uh, concerns or?
So Phil, so it's one of those things that it definitely is on our radar and Scott Paul, who's our, you know who Scott is, our IT director. Uh, it's something that he's been, he's been in touch with Schoology. Uh, he's got the must be dial, so we're definitely aware of it. Um, so yes, so yeah.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you guys too.
Thanks.
Thanks, Maddie.
All right. We have some unfinished business. Um, Anti-Racism Inequality Committee update.
Kelsey.
I was going to introduce you, Kelsey, but go back with us again. Give us an update. Thanks, Kelsey.
All right. Um, so the last time we had a school committee meeting, it was right before, um, the screening of the documentary, I'm Not Racist, Am I? And then the follow-up video the next day at FRS. Um, so as I'm sure most of you are aware, we had some seventh graders who went rogue in the, the streaming chat of that documentary. Um, started out silly, ended up really racist. Um, so obviously that was upsetting for a lot of our, our students and families. Um, so the following day, Scott did follow up with those students and their families from a discipline perspective. Um, and the seventh grade really spent a lot of time talking about it um, and talking about how those comments made the other students feel. Um, so that the students who were participating could kind of understand the impact of, of those comments and, and how their classmates were feeling about it. Um, and then Amanda was providing, Amanda Moseya, uh, provided some affinity space for our students of color um, that they could go and check in with her, uh, if they wanted to during the day. Um, and then an apology was made to the organizers and the other participating schools at the following, um, the Furcot follow-up meeting, uh, which was appreciated. So that was the, that was the downside. Um, the upside was that we had a, we had sent out a survey at the end of the, the video that we had, we'd put together that was an explanation of what is anti racism? Why are we doing this? We talked about, um, ending the N word at Frontier and we talked about the logo redesign. Um, so we had four hundred and seventy students respond to our survey. And their option, it was a temperature check kind of survey and then they also had an op, an opportunity to, to comment and ask some questions. Um, so the temperature check questions, their options were a thumbs up, a thumbs down, or an in the middle, not sure. So ending the N word, we had sixty-nine percent thumbs up, thirteen percent in the middle and eighteen percent thumbs down. For the logo redesign, we had sixty-three percent thumbs up, thirty percent in the middle and only seven percent thumbs down. And then for the documentary itself, we had sixty percent thumbs up, thirty-two percent in the middle and only eight percent thumbs down. So overall, that's a pretty positive response from our student body. Um, and the question that came up the most in the student comments was, when are we doing more of this? When can we have more discussions? We want to talk about this more. Um, so we know that our students are open to and ready to talk about these, these topics. They're aware that this is something um, that is present in our world today and in our school and they want to talk about it. So that's really encouraging. Um, so November third was our full day of anti racism professional development. So in the morning, um, all of the Frontier Regional staff were working with Radical Empathy Consulting from UMass. Um, they took us through some exercises. And then in the afternoon, there were several different workshops to participate in. And that was for both Frontier Regional and the, the elementary schools were able to join us for that as well. Um, so some of those included Elizabeth Pryor, um, talking about the use of the N word in, in an academic setting. Um, and then Amanda did a really nice workshop about responding to parent pushback from parents who are not so sure that, that school is where we should be talking about these things. Um, so on the, the PD front, the elementary schools, as, as Jen told us, are sort of getting to the end of their first round of PD and the high school is about to launch into ours. Um, so we have six more sessions lined up with the Radical Empathy Consulting from UMass that'll be taking us all the way through um, into the spring. So we're excited to be moving forward with that. Um, our peer leadership group, which is our group of ninth through twelfth graders, have their second meeting yesterday um, to sort of clarify their vision for the year and talk about what's most important to them this year. And really the message that we're getting from them is they want to have conversations, which is in, in alignment with what we heard from our survey. Um, and they're really eager to move the conversations that we've been having in that small group out into the larger student body. How can we do this? How can we do this in a class? How can we do this with elementary schools? And what might that look like in COVID? Um, so they're, they're an awesome, awesome group of students. Um, and we're really excited to be working with them. Um, our logo redesign is moving forward. The deadline for student submissions is November sixteenth. Um, I've seen a couple of them. They're looking really cool. So the next step of that is the redesign committee will pick, um, three options, and then the whole school gets to vote. And then at some point, we will be, um, showing those to you and making sure that that, that's all right with you all as well. Um, from a curriculum standpoint, the eighth grade just started their, their joint ELA and social studies curriculum with the book Stamped, um, which is really exciting. Um, and then Amanda is going to be consulting with our tenth graders who are about to jump into fences. So they've been reading some articles and doing some preparation, um, for reading that text because it does use the N-word. Um, and so we, we were doing that in a very mindful way and really framing that for them, so that we have that conversation before they encounter that word in the book. Um, and then finally, on Thursday, FurCog is having their next meeting, and we're hoping to get an update from them on the advancement of anti-racism in schools assessment that they're gonna be doing for us.
Anybody have any questions for Kelsey? Melissa, Missy?
That's okay. Um, I'm, I'm used to it. It's all right. I guess I, I want to know, uh, if there's anything that you can kind of elaborate on to maybe help to reassure some parents or students who may have gone through this experience, uh, earlier this, or I guess last month. Um, and make sure that they have an idea that people are either prepared to have these, that teachers and administrators are prepared to have these conversations, or that, that what you're doing maybe outside of just this day is getting them in a space where they're prepared to do it so that as they move forward, it doesn't feel like we're stumbling through these really heavy topics and possibly causing more harm than benefit.
Right, right. Um, I think we're starting to do that a little bit, uh, with the way that we're having the tenth graders approach fences, for example. And that, that is a template for how we want to keep moving forward with curriculum. Um, that we're not just like, and we're jumping into this book, and we're not really gonna talk about the fact that the N-word comes up. We're, we're having them pre-read articles, um, and talk about that content before they get there. So that when they, when they are in class and they're reading aloud or they're reading through passages, they know to expect the word, they know how to handle the word in the classroom. Um, and then I, I think that students also should hear about what the, the professional development that teachers are doing. Um, so that they know kind of what's going on with their teachers behind the scenes, so that they do have that reassurance that like, yeah, we're, we're open to talking about this. Um, and we're certainly gonna be leaning on our, our peer leadership group to, um, to have some of those conversations. Um, not, not that they would be facilitating those conversations, but that they're in the room and they're students who have had some of these conversations already in that small group setting. Um, and they're willing to kind of go into that brave space and take that risk and, um, ask some of the more sensitive questions and have, and get those conversations rolling.
And do you get a sense from teachers that they feel well-equipped to guide those conversations?
At this point, because I, we're so early in the PD, it's a range. There are teachers who feel very confident and are ready to go. Um, and those are the teachers who I think we would be looking at to kind of start having these conversations. And then there are teachers who are feeling like, I'm brand new to this, and I still need a little bit more of the professional development before I feel totally comfortable jumping in. And then the goal, the goal is with this professional development that we're doing this year, that we're really building the foundation for all of our teachers. So that next year, everyone is more or less on the same footing. Um, and there aren't really teachers who are saying like, oh, I'm too, I'm, you know, I, I'm not comfortable doing that. That's the hope.
And is there a separate track for the administration?
Yes, and I believe Darius has an update on that.
I do. Is everybody, is, are people finished with Kelsey? So, um,
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Kelsey.
So I have a, a quick slideshow, and I'm gonna go through a little bit faster than I did with Dear Phil. I think I was reading slides and people kind of got it. Where, where we can read. I did send it out to all the school committee, um, this afternoon, or maybe it was closer to the evening. Um, where's my share screen? Oh, you know what I'm gonna try to do is I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna try to share my screen differently because they're saying my audio isn't good. So I'm gonna go to the Chrome tab. Can you folks see that?
Nope.
Not yet.
No, it's not gonna work this way. All right.
Darius, do you want me to share? Um, is it the same presentation that Kim had?
The issue, for those of you, I'm, I'm getting some texts. There's, there's only, um, nine people watching on the YouTube link, but they're saying they can, I'm becoming out very faint. And I thought if I could open up just the, the link there, um, it would may help that, but, um, it didn't work. So, I was trying to, I was trying.
Darius, does it help if I present my screen? Oh, no, you're presenting here. Sorry.
So I have my screen here. I think I, I was just trying to, like I said, help with the, um, the faintness. So, um, I'm not gonna read through parts. I'm gonna move a little bit quicker through it than I did the, the previous meeting because we still have a lot to do in this particular meeting. And you can go back to it, read through it. But we have our anti-racism and equity mission, um, over, our overall district goals. And these are the subcommittees of our, um, um, anti-racism and equity committee, um, work. And so, um, those are the four subcommittees that we talked about before. Um, here's our district professional development goals, okay? And, um, and Kelsey's talked about this in, in previous days as well. So I'm not gonna read through them all. I'm a little quick and get right to the meat of my kind of thing. So the administrative, but professional development's kind of mission statement is, is, you know, we believe that anti-racist school leadership is about becoming racially aware and developing skills to dismantle racism, um, and associated oppressions in our schools and community. So we kind of have this general overview. And then our guiding questions for the administrative team is, what do we need to be, to be effective anti-racist leaders? How can we best coach our staff, students, and families in creating anti-racist schools? How do we effectively support anti-racism, um, subcommittee's work in our policies, curriculum, instruction, and professional development? That's a lot of where the, the, the hands-on work is actually happening. And how do we, um, foster that along? And how do we communicate and expand this work with our larger, um, community members? So right here is the kind of the meat of the, um, professional development. You know, so the, you know, the rollout of the school year, you know, we were, we were going to, um, have, um, school committee member, I mean, we're, sorry, got sidetracked because I got beeped and dinged out here. We were, we were gonna try to go along with the teachers, and right from the beginning, administrators kept on getting pulled away. And I also felt like, um, leadership needed more, um, and how to ga, guide this through. So we started off, um, obviously after the September was to, um, we brought in Dr. Elizabeth Pryor from Smith College, who has since come back and talked with the staff about use of the N-word in, um, in, in the classroom, in, when teaching curriculum, and how to support teachers and in the, in that venture. And also, we did a lot of side talk. That was the topic of our conversation. We talked a lot about leadership and how to support in an institution. Um, and I thought our administrative team, just, she's a wonderful person. I thought she gave us a lot of insight there. On October twenty-sixth, we, we joined, um, the REI Virtual Groundwater, which is a national, um, national training for leaders. Um, this particular, um, uh, training, it was a, either morning session for about three hours and an afternoon session. You know, basically brought a lot of evidence forward about the racial inequity across multiple systems, not just educations. And it talked about, it gave a lot of facts around what is the, the groundwater problem. And, um, you know, it's gonna take more than just small fixes to fix this whole, to fix the inequalities of, you know, the racial inequality in America. It's not just the education sector's problem. Um, but I think the administrators took a lot, got a lot of data and that kind of thing. It wasn't truly, um, the leadership guide that I wanted. Um, you know, we talked about that as administrative team. So we're kind of, still kind of seeking that leadership guide. In November, um, we had that full day of PD, which was fantastic. Um, you know, and, and thanks, um, to the crew here at Frontier who put that together, um, working with, um, the UMass group. Um, they're, they're phenomenal. And I have a, a slide that's gonna explain when they're coming back. We are currently also doing a book read and discussion, uh, between the world and me, um, as part of the administrative team. Um, we're, you know, we divide the book in half. And, and we're also doing at the same time, um, listening to podcasts, Nice White Parents. If you haven't listened to that podcast, it's a really, um, it's a wonderful look at good intentions of, um, in this particular case, white parents in New York City public school system, um, thinking they're bringing about change, but not really changing um, the structure of how, what was the cause of racism within the school. So it's, it's nice, it's a nice, it's a well-done podcast. And I think it's our January conversation, but I think most administrators have already gotten through it. Um, and then the twenty-second is for the elementary, um, is gonna continue with their, um, the administrators are working with the elementary schools, um, with the different consultants there, um, and such. And so, and then in February, March, we have a second book read, um, The Origins of Our Discontents. And I'm looking right now for a facilitator for that to, um, kind of press us a little bit further, um, into, into that book discussion. And I have April right now. It's more of a, uh, to be determined because I'm looking for a more leadership PD. It talks, really talks about, you know, helping principals and other leaders in our, in our schools. You know, how to support change, you know, in an organization. Um, and, you know, and obviously support those who are, who are bringing about change. Um, and then like May, in May, the summer is, we're gonna start looking at our next, next year's PD. Um, and, and possibly in our summer, we call it our Summer Summit, um, you know, bringing in an additional trainer, maybe a continuation from this leadership training we can get in April. So that's overall the, um, professional development. Um, as far as the focus for Frontier Administration, they are joining part of the, um, RACL Empathy Consulting Group um, out of, um, UMass. And these are the different, um, dates coming ahead. They're a little bit, I don't want to use the word behind, they're, I guess you could say a little behind the elementary, got a bigger jump in the beginning of the professional development days. There, they just started that off in November, and those are the dates coming up. Um, and, um, I sat in on the November second date of this, and this is a really, we were really pleased with this group and, um, and so forth. If you have in-depth conversations about this, Sarah's on as well, who kind of put, helped put this together. Sarah, and I think there were some other people that helped you there, Sarah, I believe. I don't want, I don't want to thank one person and not thank everyone. So, all right, so that's the, uh, that's the administrative. I told you I was putting a plan together that's, it's kind of along a parallel path, but I do want to try to meet the needs of administrators as well as we go through that. And I still haven't, it's not a hundred percent there yet with that, those spring kind of things we put into place. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Okay, we're gonna go right into snow days.
Hey, can I pop in real quick?
Go ahead, Missy.
Can I, I'm just wondering, um, if there's some sense of how to build in sensitivity to our relatively small, um, community of color in, uh, and, and make sure that we're responding to things that may occur with some sensitivity to how that may feel for them. And I don't know if you have, uh, reached out to kind of get a sense of how our communication has been to them around some of this stuff after the, um, the chatroom issue or how to communicate just generally?
Um, I can say, I'm on the Policy and Procedures Committee, and we're really looking about how can we put in procedures that put in greater support? You know, around any, if there's any kind of, uh, incidents of racism, that kind of thing. It's in kind of more holistic approach rather than just a punitive approach and looking at, um, those who may have been affected by it, victims of it, and that kind of thing, and do a better job there. Um, and I know I have multiple administrators on who could also jump in regarding, um, how we followed up to the, the film as well. Um, that was taken in consideration. And we talked about Amanda Mazaia putting on, Kelsey used a term, and I forgot that you used there. Um, but, but we're able to meet with, we're able to meet with Amanda to discuss what their feelings were as a former student, you know, student of color, um, and, and talking through that. Um, and so we're, we're building those as we're putting into these, these, these systems. Yes, those are, those are good points.
And I, I was just thinking about it being more kind of proactive as opposed to reactive, like how, how can we reach out to you and make you feel more a part of this community and, uh, as opposed to reactive when things occur?
I, I don't, okay, thank you.
If you don't mind me jumping into areas. Um, so I think for, because our, our students of color are such a small population, I think that giving them choice and autonomy is really important. Um, I'm sorry, my dog is chasing right now the drink behind me. Um, so some of the, some of the comments that we got in the survey from our BIPOC students, um, were, especially our younger BIPOC students, were, I don't want to be singled out, like, I don't want everyone to look at me. Um, you know, very, very like, listen, I'm keeping my head down and I'm doing my thing. And like, don't, don't like, don't make this a thing. Um, so I think having, Amanda does want to be available. She is hoping to have like a bi-weekly after-school group um, where students can come and speak in a group of just BIPOC people and really talk about like, what's going on? How does this feel? What's coming up for you? Um, but we did only have one student who, um, used her affinity space on that Tuesday. Which does, you know, isn't to say that there weren't more students who would have benefited from it. Um, but I think giving, making sure that they've just got that choice and that autonomy of like, hey, this is something that's available to you. And if you, if you don't want to engage in it, that's totally fine. Um, but it, it's a tricky balance of, um, it's a tricky balance of making sure that they feel supported without making, without making them feel like there's a huge spotlight on them, which is tough in this particular population.
Totally, I get that.
Thank you. Darius, do you see that message?
Yeah, that apparently I'm the only one people can't hear, which is probably a blessing to some, but you know, they got two computers going. Maybe I'll try to log on to the meat on this screen and maybe that'll do something.
Okay.
Carry on.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Well, we're gonna bring up snow days now, so. Or George could maybe say something about the snow days or something.
I, I don't have anything to say about snow days, I don't think. That's more Darius's role, I think.
Okay. I just see there was a, our remote days update, you know, that's, you know.
So what I'm gonna do.
His update here was that snow days are going to be.
All right, let me see if this works. Um, when Jessica texts me if you're watching, if this is working. Takes, it's a ten-second feed, but I'm gonna try to go to a different computer that's on a different account for the talking. Um, snow days in general just was just an update. I said, I sent out a message, everybody, just letting everybody know that we are, I just wanted to make sure I had, I completed the loop talking with all of you. Um, that, you know, we will have remote days for snow days unless we're getting crushed with snow. So I think that the issue is, is that if I go on a separate computer rather than the one I'm streaming from, they can hear me. So I'm gonna go over here. So, um, so that's it is on snow days.
Okay. Um, next is, um, we're gonna vote on a couple policies that we've reviewed since last, last meeting. Um, does anybody have any questions about ACAB or DEDH?
Um, just to let people know, the only update we had on the, the first one, um, the anti-discrimination is, we did remove all the names that was suggested by the school committee that, um, we removed the names of who held the positions within the policy and just made it general. So that's the one change you'll see.
Phil, did you have a question?
Yeah, um, when I, when I was going through that, there was a couple of, so, um, there's a couple of, uh, questions. First of all, in the chat, Roman numeral three of the ACAB one, it seemed like there was a, a word missing that school, the Frontier Regional School before the word committee in, in the last, last sentence, best sentence of the first paragraph. It just talks about the word committee, but throughout that policy, there'd been no reference to any committee at all. So, um, I, I, I assume it means that the regional school committee, I thought it should probably specify that. And then in the, in the title, uh, the title nine, the Roman numeral nine part, where it says that the school gets, the school has act, actual notice. Where it says that the school gets, the school has actual notice if any school employee has noticed. I believe that includes school committee members, I believe were, were considered. In school employees. So I, and that to me, it seems like a, a bit of a reach if it's. Really has to be any school employees as opposed to full-time school employees or. People on the payroll of the school, I don't know, but I certainly didn't want to be. I mean, just in the course of my 10 years, I, there's numerous times individual employees have made complaints to. In my presence, so I don't want that to be noticed for the school. I'd like to just be able to say, talk to Darius about it.
It's on that last statement, Phil, the policy does apply to all, everyone in the school community. So it does, you know, it says at the bottom of that first paragraph. Associated with the educational community, including but not limited to students, district employees, school committees, school volunteers, and independent contractors. I'd have to get legal guidance if you do something wrong, Phil.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, why do I get dragged into this?
Missy, did you have something, Missy?
I did, but I found it, so I'm, I'm good.
Okay. And does anybody have anything, are we going to vote on these separately, Darius? So I need a motion on ACAB.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Missy?
Do you want to vote them together or do them individually, Bob?
Why don't we, why don't we vote them together to make it easy for you? I need a motion on BEDH.
So moved.
Missy, second.
Roll call, Bob Howa?
Yes.
Lynn Roberts?
Yeah.
I'm going to go first name is only Phil.
Yes.
Rudy, yes, Mary?
Yes.
Amyann?
Uh, just real quick, I'm sorry, I stepped away to the bathroom. What are we voting on?
We're voting on policy ACAB and BEDH together.
Yes.
Thanks, Keith.
Oh my God.
Keith, you there?
Yes.
Uh, Missy?
Yes.
Olivia?
Yes.
Alright, we're all set, we're all set, Bob.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we got some new business, MAS, MASC. Mr. Decker is going to get a lifetime achievement award. Darius and I still don't know who, who put in for his lifetime achievement award. Maybe he put it in for himself. I haven't asked him that question yet. But we, Darius and I wanted to recognize him during our school committee meeting that. He is going to get a lifetime achievement award, so. Still don't know who, who put in for him, maybe the lady from Lee put it in for him or something, who knows? Yes, Phil?
I sent an email to them, I don't know, I, I think other people did too. But, but we, we ought to do something for the guy. We ought to.
I actually thought, I went to the meeting on Saturday and they, and they talked about that too. And I was actually surprised, I'm like, oh really? I sat there thinking, oh, Bob really should get this. He really should.
Yeah. Now, is there some type of plaque? I'm pretty sure they're going to get some type of plaque or something.
There were no plaques that I saw on my screen, so.
Yeah.
But that would be exciting.
Okay. Maybe we, can we do a formal something for him in some capacity?
I think we, so we have several things, we have a couple members on different committees where we need to recognize their years of service. People kind of slipped away in the digital, disappeared in the digital universe where we don't. Haven't had their proper goodbyes and their proper thank yous in a public setting, so. Yeah, we'll, we'll put something together. I don't know if we should try to do it digitally or if we should just wait until, well, when Missy thinks it's okay for us to be helpful, to be back to school. No, but, so. Yeah, I mean, I want to do something and we'll talk about it, we'll, we'll put something together, but that came across with Jessica, I wanted to make sure we didn't lose track of it. So now that it's in the minutes, we'll, we'll do something for those who have served. Before we.
Yeah, Bob deserves it. Okay, community help indicators, this must be time for Meg and to come on and help us out. Right?
What I'm going to do is I'm going to share my screen again, but this time I got the other screen going so people can hear me. And then. No cheating.
Alright.
So, so Meg is going to set you up, I, I, Dearfield, just for time-wise, I just highlighted the, the changes that we were talking about. And just to kind of set the thing, so we, we decided we had to create new health indicators because they were changing. And then we sent them off to the Boards of Health to say, this is what we're thinking about the changes. And then we sent them out, what, Monday or something like last week? And then the state changed them on Friday after some of the Boards of Health met to discuss these. So we kind of have to redo them and, you know, I think Jessica's statement earlier, we can kind of comment about that as we go through. But Meg, I'll let you kind of go take it from here, okay?
Okay. So quickly, there's the stuff I always put there and, you know, really it comes down to masks, masks, masks. And physical distancing. The other things are important still as well, but. You can go. So in terms of the data sources, there's not really different there in terms of what the primary things we're looking at. The state data and then the Public Health Institute of Western Mass is where we get our county level data. So this is the new, it's, it's a little small on this slide, I apologize. This is a, this is the chart from, from, from DPH. And there's a correction on there, and so apologies to Jessica or others. I had written average daily cases and it's actually an incident rate. But, you know, so the highlighted information is really just the new. Kind of thoughts from, from Desi in terms of what a community would do in response to these. You know, and I think I'll follow up with you at some point, if, if I may, to just. Go through some of your calculations. I will be honest, I'm very tired and I didn't follow all of what you were doing. So I'd love to, to talk with you about that another time, but, you know, all of our towns are under 5,000. And so this is sort of. I don't know, I think it's self-explanatory, this is what the state has. I'm not going to go into the details, this is just, that's an old map.
But basically, the, I think what, the highlight of what's coming out from Desi is they're basically, so, you know, remember when we put this together? We had to come up with some sort of metrics in August before the state came out with metrics. And then the states come out with metrics a couple of times and they've changed kind of things, but. I think, you know, working with the local boards of health, the one thing the local board of health said, the, the state metrics are fine and colorful, but we're going to look at the data that we have in front of us. And we're going to make decisions about the school. And the metrics kind of, from the very beginning, it was like the metrics be, be darned, you know? And so, you know, you know, and so. Basically, what the state is saying that you need to be in the week, you have to be in the red for three weeks before you start to consider closing schools. Our conversation with local boards of health is that they're not following that model. They're going to be looking for, Meg, I'll let you kind of take it from there, but, you know, they're going to be looking for community spread in cases that are going to be affecting the school.
Right. And I think what I was going to, what I was going to say as we go through is that really the biggest change we made to our metrics is to take out some of the. Hardened trigger points in terms of what would happen. When a data threshold was, was reached, because I think the thing that we, that we learned as we went along. Is, is the nuance and is. You know, that we, we really need to be working with our local boards of health on the context of any of the data points. You know, and I think certainly earlier this fall, when we had the windstorm in Sunderland, all of a sudden was red. You know, according to the metric, you know, that was a closure. But then when, when Darius talked with Caitlin Rock and I talked with Caitlin Rock and their Board of Health in Sunderland had an emergency meeting. It was really clear that of the 11 cases, 10 were higher ed, the cluster at UMass. Sorry, I don't know what got in my throat. So really it's, you know, any of the data thresholds are going to be a consult. With our local board of health, individual, or town level. And we're also, you know, we're also trying to pull data from neighbor municipalities, so I'm often in conversation with Greenfield Public Health Nurse. To find out what's happening there. And to try and get a sense of, when there are increasing cases in Franklin County. You know, what's happening? And certainly we saw it when there were increases earlier in October. Related to a couple of events inside, no masks, no social distancing. And then a rec, rec sports events that again, were not following the safety protocols of the state. Caused a couple of clusters. So this does have, you know, the, we really didn't change. I mean, we changed this first one to sort of reflect what Desi is requiring and Dearfield is still, as far as I know, they haven't changed language about the indicator. Municipalities, and I think for us, makes sense to sort of stick with that. I did change the threshold for the county data. And this is based on, there's a risk assessment report that came out October 14th and that. That CDC risk assessment data, but basically for Franklin County, and this is a solid, this is just a count. This isn't a rate or anything, it's just a straight, straight out count. That as cases in Franklin County as a whole are below 50. And that's excluding, you know, congregate, again, the, the kind of nursing home, structural facility or higher ed. And it would be, again, would be a consult. And then we didn't change these last, sort of more local and internal data points. We would, if we had cases that, I added these slides about the rapid mobile testing unit from the state. And that's to test asymptomatic. Members of a school community. And basically, they, there's pretty scripted criteria for requesting it. And I basically, you know, I looked at what they had and I kind of said, you know, look, honestly, if we have two cases, we're asking for it. We're going to ask, two cases in a school, we're going to ask to have them mobilize that. And again, you know, any closure is, is really for us to assess what's going on and. All of our mitigation strategies are, are effective. This is just more about the mobile testing. And there's our criterias on the last slide. So it's, you know, it really does come down to conversations with our local board of health. And happening in the community, what, you know, what information they have, because there, there will be information that they have that we. About the cases in our community and, and where those cases are and the, and as Darius, as you said, the real question is. Are, you know, isolated cases, groups of cases, are we seeing community transmission? And in really for us, the question is, are we seeing anything that suggests to us that there's potential for a spread within the school? So.
Phil?
So Meg, just about the, the mobile testing unit. I don't know what the, has there been a protocol about what's going to happen if one is called? You know, is, is each town's emergency management coordinator going to be brought in to use the. Dial, record, the recording dial for every number in town?
No, no, it would, it would be, it would be specifically for a school community. For, for the. Right, and the state would come in, we have permission slips for students and for staff. So it, it would be where there was concern about cases within a school that raised a question of transmission within the school. Way to do, you know, testing anybody who was considered. You know, exposed within the cohorts or the class or the learning group, and certainly at the high school. Middle school and high school, we get into larger learning groups by the time you, you kind of look at where everybody is. And again, that is to test asymptomatic people. To see if, if there is more happening than what we're aware of so that we can respond to it quickly.
Okay, thanks.
Good question. Missy?
Yeah, Meg, does the state pick up the cost for that testing?
Yeah. They show up, they do it all, all we have to do is hand them the permission, the signed permission slips. Have those forms ready to just be run off if we were to need them.
Anybody else have any questions for Meg? Thanks, Meg.
You are welcome.
Have a, have a nice night.
Thanks.
Okay, Phase Three Hybrid Planning. Who's up? Darius?
So, yep, so basically, you know, we're met now with the, a couple of weeks ago, I met with the administrative team and we started talking about, alright, so we've been, we were a few weeks in. Not a few weeks, we're about a month and a half in. We got to start looking about what is the next phase look like? And so I charged with each principal to start working within their buildings to figure out what can Phase Three look like? And so tonight we have a, kind of a draft form, right? I think Sarah or Georgia, I think, I don't know, is it Sarah? Are you leading the charge on this one?
Sure.
George, you going to fight Sarah on that?
No, he's gonna, he's just going to bail me out if it, if it all goes south. Yeah, so we, so we've been talking about next steps, I mean. Frankly, we're, we're really grateful to still be in school at this point. I mean, we really didn't know what was going to happen, we started out in September. And then as the cases started to rise, we thought, oh no, here it comes. And we're just, for every day that we can keep our students in school. We feel, we feel good about it, because they're really getting a lot out of the experience. We have had a phenomenon where a lot of our, not a lot, but a number of our high school students have decided to go remote. Even after the fact, and I think part of that is socially what's going on. So if your friends aren't there, then, you know, you might as well get the social someplace else and use school for just your work. And I think one of the things that's happened is because the remote and the in-person learning are so aligned. That students can afford to stay home if they need to and participate in their classes remotely. And I think that's been a really huge advantage of what's happening. And it's a real advantage when you think about students maybe waking up with a sore throat. Or something, and it's just not a big deal to, to opt out and stay home for that day. So, but we are looking at what are the next steps as far as bringing more students back in person. And we did put together a draft document. And we're looking at really targeting our students that are not doing well with this remote learning plan. And adding days to their schedule, so adding, so instead of them coming two days in person. They would be coming three days in person. We do have a number of students that are already in the building for three days and some students that are in the building for four days. But their third and their fourth day are remote learning that just is happening in school. So we would be looking at taking those students and integrating them into their classes, so they'd be fully participating in classes. For an initial day of learning. So we've been very conscious of what the numbers will do in each classroom. We still are very committed to keeping students six feet apart in the classroom. And so we're not exceeding those numbers. So what that means is for the middle school classes, we can accommodate them eventually. So this is the next part, so phase, so our first part of Phase Three is bringing in our high need students. And so that's about 30 students in each end of the building, 30 students in the middle school and 30 students in the high school. The next part, or the real, the honest to goodness Phase Three. Is bringing in middle school students for a third day of learning. So we're looking at, the earliest date that that could possibly happen would be December 7th. Because we're really conscious. Because we're really conscious of the Thanksgiving holiday that's coming up. And we want to make sure that we allow enough time after that holiday, uh, for things to settle down again. So we don't even have a, a hard fast date on that because we really do need to see what happens with the health situation. But for our high need students, uh, we're going to be starting to roll them in slowly, um, starting next week. I don't know if that makes sense.
And if anybody want, once again, I shared, uh, I shared a link to the document to the, to the phase through, to the draft. Uh, it's, I, I shared a link to it in the principal's report. If anybody wants to, if, if you want to take a look at it.
Yeah, we put it a lot of, there's a bunch of logistical details at the bottom that you don't really need to know, but they are kind of interesting. You know, some of the other planning that has to happen around all of this, like where, where do we move lunch? Because we want to make sure that we keep the distance in the cafeteria. How do we keep groups separate? You know, so you can kind of get a sense of, of some of the other logistical pieces that go along with, um, with increasing the number of days the kids come.
Thanks, Sarah and George.
Yeah, go ahead, Missy.
Have you contacted Polly Wosny and had her, uh, coordinate with you guys?
I know she's a, she's a mastermind of, of figuring out where people should go and timing and all of that. Yeah, she is, she is one of the most organized people that I know.
In my head, I'd like her in roller skates like Abby on NCIS.
Yes, yes. Yeah, yeah, perfect analogy. Yeah.
Thank you. Um. Athletics, fall sports, planning for the winter sports?
Yeah. So I throw that, I threw this on there when I was developing the, uh. The agenda, uh, to find out where we're at. Right now, we're at the point where, um, administration has met. Um, that the county is still trying to figure out what sports they're going to allow. Cause we have to kind of work together about who's playing who and that kind of stuff. Um, and so, you know, looking at their, our winter sports offerings, um, for those who aren't following the athletics day to day, there, it's basketball, wrestling. Uh, hockey, um, cheer and.
Skiing.
Skiing. And so the idea is we're trying to figure out what the best way to, how to approach those sports. How much risk is, is in those sports? Basketball is obviously pretty much. Being an in-your-face sport and, and how we're going to approach this and what are the other schools going to do? Um, you know, the issue, you know, just to have really briefly, we don't have a decision yet because it's kind of in the decision-making phase right now. Um, but you know, the concern, one of the concerns I have, I, I hit both sides. I think the athletics this fall being outdoors has been a savior for a lot of our students. Um, and trying to get those other things up and running that we do, those extracurriculars. Um, to get them, you know, I think, I think the days the kids have practice are their favorite days of the week. Um, you know, even if they weren't involved in an actual sports pro, uh, varsity program, you know, they do the, the practices thing. I'm speaking from my own children's experience. Um, so. We want to make sure we do something, um, but we also at the same time, right now, most of Franklin County is remote. Um, for other high schools. And so. It's, you know, we're playing a different kind of game if we're going to be playing other schools where we could be closing down education and how we're doing it. They're not really as much. So, you know, we kind of talked about that a little bit. You know, what is the level and then, you know, can we do scheduling that doesn't have us go to multiple schools in the same week? Those kind of ideas that, that go out there if we do keep a varsity program. I think no matter what we do, I think, um, George, Scott, um. Even, and Sarah agree that whatever we do, we have to put it, if we don't have. Athletics to some level, we gotta replace it with intermurals that are kind of, um. They're cooked up and we can play each other and that kind of stuff. Um, maybe smaller groups, not full five-on-five, smaller amounts, four-on-four, whatever we have for participation. Um, you know, that's basketball and then maybe even other activities, but we gotta keep the community active because. I really am concerned overall about isolation in the winter. It's already a, a, a poor model, people being isolated as well. And I think we're going to see, we're already hearing about our. The agencies around us that deal with, um, health, uh, mental health issues of, of people are, are seeing, you know, there are more than enough, they can't be more cases than they can handle. Um, and if you're talking about, you're seeing the rise of, you know, abuse of. Alcohol and all the other kind of things and what's happening in households, um, we gotta be there to provide those outlets for students, um, and, um. And take care of their mental health as well. So, um, anyway, and I think. Activity is important in there. It's not just athletics, but other clubs and stuff and how can we get those going as well? George, you want to jump in and all, you, you got a better handle on some of the other stuff that's going on?
In terms of athletics?
No, you, I, other stuff, I said.
Olivia's got a question too, George too, so.
So yeah, I mean, do you want me to give my report now? Can I, is that what you're asking?
Why don't you, why don't you wait? Olivia's got a question about, probably about falls, uh, winter sports, Olivia?
Uh, I just wanted to kind of, I'm not sure if I'm hearing this correctly. So, um, we're considering wrestling with other schools. And then those kids are going to come and sit in the classroom with our kids, like is that, we're really considering, and I'm just asking because, um. You know, there's ways that we could change, you know, field hockey a little bit so they're not so close or, you know, maybe even basketball. But wrestling just seems like it's really hard and I get like, we can't just say, okay, I guess we could, but you don't really want to be like, oh, sorry, not you for sports. Um.
I, I think nothing's been finalized, so I just want to be careful that I pre-release. Um, but the, I think wrestling might be following the rule, the role of like what football did in doing workouts and not playing.
Right.
Wrestling as we know wrestling, you know, there could be weight training and doing other things to keep them, that, that group active and such. I don't see wrestling as we know it happening. Sorry wrestlers out there. I'm sorry, I didn't see there, Scott.
That makes me feel a little better. Uh, and I think intermural things are really awesome idea. I would help support that however I could. I think you're right, these kids absolutely need an active outlet. Um, and I think sports are fantastic, you know, but, you know, inside sports have their own issues, of course. So, um, so thank you.
But I also have to plug in because I was, um, talking with a student regarding, and I was hoping, George, you were going to jump in on this, but they're talking about how they can do a play. Um, and, and they're, and they're trying to put things together so to bring the arts, um, the, the back as well. So George, do you have?
And that is something, and that is something that I can, I apologize. I was a little slow in the, uh, I was a little slow in the uptake there, Darius. My bad. No, but one of the things that we, we've actually had the opportunity to, uh, to meet with Dave Peck and it's, and he has been meeting with his, uh, with his, with his drama students. Uh, and they are exploring the idea of doing, uh, of doing a play and doing it virtually. Um, and, and, and they're hopeful that's going to happen. Uh, and we're also hopeful that, uh, there will be some. Configuration of a musical or something happening in the spring. Um, you know, the folks, the, the Max and Christina who were, you know, were really, um, integral and, and, and bringing that to life last spring. Uh, you know, they're, they're exploring ideas as to what they can do, um, moving forward this year under the current, under the current system. So, so we're hopeful that we can, that we can keep the arts going in that respect as well. So, um, I think that, I think that that's, that would be fantastic.
Thanks, George. Um. Capital planning?
So capital planning is, as we know, we have a capital planning subcommittee. So I guess this was just an overview of where we are going into the capital planning subcommittee. So I shared while you were on this meeting, I actually realized I didn't share with you earlier with the other stuff that I shared. Um, I did share with you our new form. Um, whoop. I forget, I gotta share it on this screen. Losing my mind. All right. So basically, whoop, wrong. Basically you have all this at home, but, um, our wonderful Shelley put together, um, an update to last year's form. And basically, um, you have this so you can play around and look at, but this is where we are at the beginning of the process that subcommittee has not gone through it yet. You know, and we're looking at possibly having a meeting, um, next Wednesday. I'm waiting to hear back from all the committee members if they can make it. Um, but as just kind of going through the layout of it again. I think it's important that we leave what's been completed on there for at least a few years. So people who said, didn't we just do this? They can say, we, you know, we, we sharing this kind of thing, um, you know, with, uh. You know, select boards and those kind of things and to see what we've been completing, where the taxpayers' money's gone. If you scroll to the right. Um, we've actually even put in what year we requested it, what year was funded, the approved amount, the actual spend. And the remaining funds from each of those things. So even stronger tracking of our capital, remember we talked about. You know, that we, I, I talked about, um, really I wanted to be as transparent as possible in the capital projects. People should see what's coming. They should see what we've done, um, that kind of thing. And with that transparency, we get more buy-in hopefully to fund what we need to get funded. So just as an overview, and I'm, I'm just going to go briefly because it's going to go to the subcommittee and then come back. Um, but a lot of the projects that, some of the projects that we approved last year, um, as you can see here, you know. Again, our number system is one is things that we'd be looking to get done this year. Two is something that possibly next year, maybe get moved up to, to one, depending on how the finances work. And three is basically on the radar. Um, i- if you can go down, there's a long list of stuff that we have on. That we haven't gotten through because we know this is going to be a more difficult year financially for the town. So I don't think we've gone crazy about. Numbering everything through, but we gotta redo the numbering on that as part of our committee. Um, remember that just this committee, remind this committee that. We did a freeze on the approved expenditures added E and D last spring. So those first three things were approved by you. So you're like, didn't we already do that? Um, yeah, you, you did approve that, but we froze it because we were very concerned about what is this COVID going to bring and so on and so forth. And so. I think the subcommittee is going to have to go through to, to just help, um, help us all decide about how we should manage this moving forward. So I guess that's really all I want to do is just a quick overview that we're starting this process. And, um, I think we can get our, our capital plan in by, you know, by early, by early January or even December where they, where we had it in the past. I don't think the COVID is going to change that. Um, you can always put a request in and then. Modify it down if we have to or up.
Darius, can I make two comments?
Sure.
Um, on those three projects that we did hold off on that were approved last year, those will have to be revoted if they're reprioritized as. Ones still, um, just to make that clear for everyone. And then the independent auditing firm Scanlon's office is currently doing our audit. And assessing E and D. So hopefully we'll have more info by the, um, capital planning meeting. I certainly have, uh, an estimate on the number. Um, but we don't have the exact figure for excess and deficiency yet, which is part of the capital conversation.
Was the, um. Was the money put aside for those three projects originally, Shelley? And will it, and if we have to re-vote on it, is that money going back in? Will that put us over the 5%?
No. So when I had done the calculation last year, it was with keeping that in E and D, not spending it. Because we weren't sure what we were going to need to support this year. So what we basically did was took that money. Off of the books to be used, put it back into E and D and it shouldn't put us over at all. Um, like I said, you would just have to re-vote on it. We hadn't started any of the projects. We hadn't encumbered any of the funds. So we couldn't keep them going into a new year, um, because nothing had been started yet since we froze the budget.
And I think also remember, we didn't have all the COVID grants at the time, you know, that, that, the $100,000 that we held back. Um, was going to be for the things that we needed to do in order to get school in a hybrid model.
How are we doing on supplies, Darius, overall? I mean, are we, are we doing all right on supplies, you know?
PPs, yeah, the COVID PPs, yeah, we're doing fine. Um, I think, um. I'll be honest, I haven't double-checked that recently, but in a sense of, we didn't go burn through them nearly as, as much as we. I mean, a lot of the problems that we projected ahead just didn't occur. You know, having to provide students with a lot of masks, we didn't have, most people, you know, masks is a fashion statement that we all know. Um, so, you know, there's not a lot of paper masks being handed out or what we call them, you know, and a lot of the other kind of, the number of. Gowns a nurse is going to have to go through on a daily basis. You have to be prepared, but it's just, we've been forced enough to have to use them as much as, um, we had planned for, which is good.
I can speak to that a little bit as well. Um, I think Darius is really spot on there as far as masks and gowns, some of those pieces. We are still having a hard time getting KN95s and N95 masks for, um, staff that need them. Um, and then the other thing that's been difficult to get is gloves. Um, we've had a hard time getting our hands on our, on a restock. We have supplies still and orders are in process. But those are just a couple of the harder things that we've had, um, trouble getting.
Thank you. Judy?
Yeah, can I just, I went back and read your, uh, meeting invite, Darius, and it said, it's like an opt-out only. So I just assumed if you can go, you don't say anything. So, because the way you stated it was like, oh. Darius is frozen.
No, I was frozen.
He was thinking.
Frozen in thought.
Yeah. Captating commentary from Judy Pierce over here.
Hopped out for what?
The, the meeting on the 18th. It was both like only let you know if you can't attend. So I just was like, oh, of course I can attend, so I'm not going to say anything. So I'm just assuming we're having the meeting, so book it.
We're having the meeting.
Great.
Good. Ditto for me.
Well, thanks, Phil.
Thanks for that clarification.
I'm not trying to harass you, Darius. I'm like, did I misunderstand it? Cause it's only like 8,000 emails a day.
Okay, reports. I have nothing. We, uh, Lynn, we have anything from the collaborative?
Uh, yeah, just a couple of things. Um, they wanted to me to remind you that they offering free accessibility audit, audits of district websites. Um, so they can point out areas of issues for students with situational limits or disabilities. Um, so they've got people who will look at our website and make sure that it's accessible to everybody. And, uh, Bill Deal is retiring in December. That's it.
Thank you. George, we got your report. Do you want to add anything to it?
I don't need to add anything to it, but just one of the things that Lynn just mentioned just sort of sparked something in my head, um, with, just so you guys also know. With our, um, the school council that, that, that meets, uh, once a month. One of the things that we're looking at right now is actually updating, is updating our website. We're, we're entitled to, um, a free upgrade. And so, you know, one of the things that we're looking at, um, because, you know, because so much more is happening online now. Uh, we are looking to update our website. So it's, it's a, it's a bit of a drawn out process. Um, but, um, we've already met with Scott Paul, uh, and we've started looking at some of the, the templates that, 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 that they offer to us. And so we're hoping we can move along with that. Um, and yeah, no, you guys, and, and that's, I, I, that's something that's not on my report. So, um, other than that, I think you guys can probably check out the report. If you have any questions, just, just let me know. And thank you.
Thanks, George. Um, Darius, you want to add, chime in?
Nope, I don't have a report. Um, I will say that our, 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 uh, current website does have the handicap, uh, rating. So we, we have that done already. So we'll make sure we get it in the news site as well. And our Chromebooks came in for high school, for middle and high school. Yep.
That's great. That's good news. And we are going to executive session? Nope. Hey, just short of two hours. Uh, does anybody want to share anything before we say goodnight? I need a motion and a second and a roll call.
Don't move. Don't move.
Second.
Olivia has got a second. Go ahead, Judy.
Uh, Bob?
Yep.
Lynn?
Yep.
Phil?
Yes.
Judy, yes. Mary?
Yes.
Damian?
Yep.
Uh, Keith?
Yes.
Missy?
Yes.
Olivia?
Yes.
Excellent. 8:51.
Good night, everybody.